I want to call the meeting to an order. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay, warrant and bills have been signed.
Correct.
We're all set. Approval of the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I apologize, the public hearing is still on there.
I'll second that.
That's fine. You all in favor? Okay, I have an agenda. Minutes?
The video was not up yesterday.
Okay, that's fine. Town administrators' weekly update, Jennifer.
I'll pass this week.
Okay. Department head committee chair updates.
My first.
Will Langley, Adam's not here tonight, but we got the roof down to the sand shed, well, tractor shed or whatever you want to call it, garage, all done. They were there Monday and when I went back down in the afternoon, they were gone. So, everything, everything's all set.
It's good?
That looks good.
So, are we at a point where we want to release the payment or does anybody want to inspect it?
You could probably see if Adam just run down there tomorrow and take a look at it.
Who would normally inspect? Is that something Jason would do or Adam or what?
I mean...
You know, I think that's a good idea. Send Jason down, take a look at it.
Yeah.
Give him a thumbs up on it. All good, right?
That's great. Any other department head committee chair updates? Okay. Liaison updates. Warrant and finance committee didn't meet this past week. That right? Yeah, it was the week before, right? Yeah, thanks. Transfer station, no activity, fire department, we just hired the chief. I had, I planned to meet with him soon and just get his thoughts on things. Capital improvement committee met last night. I was not able to join you. You know, I just want to say as a liaison, my sense of how that works. I'm not planning, nor do I think my colleagues are, planning to attend every meeting, committee meeting. We certainly are happy to be there if there are things that need to be discussed and you want input from the liaison. A heads up, we'll make sure that we're there. But I think it's important for the committees to be able to function somewhat independently and have a ranging discussion without necessarily the selectmen in the room. So, I think we seek to find a good balance between when to be there and when to just sort of let, ensure, support the committee to do the work that their vested responsibilities with. So, these updates, I think, are great, but you know, there can be times when, you know, there just wasn't any activity and personally, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's the same thing with me. It's like I missed the last road committee meeting because I knew they were making their recommendations. Me being in the room, normally I get asked questions, I get into the conversation, and I felt by me being there that night, I didn't want to, you know, persuade any, which way, let them do their own thing, so I purposely didn't go to that meeting. But I had done the ones before that when we discussed it. But, yeah, I feel the same way. I mean, I go when I feel that it's a must.
Yeah.
And I'll also pop in when, you know, it's not, but just to see what's going on. But I don't believe we have to be there every time.
Kim?
I feel the same way. I mean, I can't, I can't be at everyone, every, every time they have one. You know, sometimes some of the committees have them on the weekends. I can't do weekends, I work weekends, so that's tough.
Sundays aren't good.
But if any committee or committee chair feels it's helpful to have...
They need us, they have these calls.
Liaison there, let us know.
Yeah.
And we'll make every effort to be there.
Oh, definitely.
But I think it's important that these committees be able to function independently and, you know, go about their deliberations, their discussions, and the floor is always open. Every committee chair can come, encouraged to make a report, ask any questions, advance any issue they want.
It doesn't have to be the chair either.
Take advantage of that, please.
It doesn't have to be just the chair.
No, it doesn't have to be the chair.
No, it can be anybody from that committee to come and give us...
It would be a good...
But it's nice, yes.
I think there are meetings to delegate somebody for that.
Mm-hmm.
That way they don't have different people from the same committee coming up doing the same...
Right, but I know sometimes things come up and if they could send, like TJ came wanting...
I think the chair should know.
Oh, right, definitely, yeah.
I think the individuals should let the chair know that they're planning to come.
Right, and then...
And they can choose to come or not, but...
And the difference with one of our committees is that we have a town employee on there. So, that's a little bit of a difference with that particular committee. I mean, when we have a paid employee, because I know those conversations were at the meetings that we just watched, if you're a paid employee, I mean, the board does expect to see that person. There's a little bit of difference with that committee because they're not all volunteers.
In that case there, but I do believe that, and I'm not sure, Kim, you might know, but whether or not that committee's picked chair and this and that for that committee. Have they done that? Say the rec committee?
Um, I'm trying to think here. No.
I know there was talks that they were going to, but if they have, if they have done that, then...
The last one I was at, they hadn't, but...
I think the director has stepped into the role of chair.
Right.
That's my understanding. I was liaison at that time and it was the director was going to function as the chair.
That one, that committee functions a little differently because you have a paid employee, so...
Oh, okay.
But I feel that, say, the, whoever is vice chair of that committee, okay, because they're not paid employees and they're, they're an advisement to the director, and that's the way we look at it, right?
No.
That, I think that person should be able to come and give a...
On behalf of?
Of behalf of their committee, not the director itself.
Yeah, sure.
That way they have...
Yeah, hopefully they want to come in and let us know what's going on.
Kim, do you have an update on liaison?
Yep. Cemetery committee still hasn't met yet. And APAT, actually, did you just say something's not up yet that should have been on?
Yeah, I think he's got it up today, but Tuesday was a day for minutes, but I think he's got it up now.
Okay.
We did, he did spend a little extra time based on the concerns we got about the rec meeting.
All right, so that's why.
Getting that up, so that might have been the delay.
And this month, I want to go to the school meeting, so that hasn't happened yet. As far as the rec committee, I didn't go Sunday. I can't go Sundays. I did talk to Sam, though. And actually, we just watched some of the meeting. I'm waiting for the transcript to kind of go over what happened at that meeting. There were some issues. But she gave me a list of things that she'd like. I know I touched on them briefly. I don't know if you heard me. She was asking about a walking trail at the rec. But, I mean, it's a great idea, but right now, again, I think we had talked about just kind of...
I didn't hear that at all during the meeting. Was that during...
No, no, when we were, just as we were coming in here...
When we were watching their meeting, was that discussed during their meeting at all?
I didn't watch the whole thing. And I, there was a lot of people talking, so I couldn't really hear. I was having a hard time. So anyhow, this is, I have a list of things she had given me. So, walking trails was something, an idea. Also asking about maybe money for refs for games because I have a hard time to get refs. So, I don't know about that. She had the question about needing an engineer for the driveway.
Yeah, they spent a lot of time talking about basically the fact that she, that there was a couple of members on there that felt like that you guys made a decision about an engineer and that you haven't communicated that with, with Sam. There was some comments from the public, so...
So, I did watch a part of the meeting. And for those who watched the meeting, those who were there that seemed to be uninformed, we have discussed it. We are working on writing an RFP for going out and trying to find an engineer for that project. And because we feel at this point we're going to have to do that, we feel it's the fairest way to do it and the more constructive way to do it, make sure the job is done right. And, and second of all, the trees aren't going to grow up in the field up there. It's all bark bolt right now. It'll be fine for, until spring if that's what we have to do. And...
The driveway permit was sent back out again, too.
So, Kim, you're going to be working on seeing when that permit is?
Yeah, we sent it out again.
We have, can we send an email to somebody? Do we have an email we can send out to kind of put a...
Yeah, I don't know. I thought the paid rec director was handling it.
Yeah.
Rec director's handling it?
I thought that that was part of one of the things that was the...
Well, from the meeting the other day that I saw on tape, I guess she thinks we're taking care of it.
Well, I had said I would do the driveway permit and I put the town of Akron and you as, you know, a contact, you know, because, you know, because the town owns the...
It's gone out now twice?
Twice. Okay, so, the second time I did it right from here and hopefully they get it. Because, you know, I sent my, my permit out. Mine went through, but for some reason, they didn't, I mean, they went together.
So, was there an email address, was there, is there an email address on the contact?
I mean, I can find, I'm sure I can find one.
We'll look, David, to see if we can find an email to track down.
Yeah, I just think if we had an email where we can kind of...
Confirm it's been received?
Right, yeah. Just keep the fire and eat it, you know, give them a roll and see if we can get something moving here and...
So, are we, they are going to need an engineer's report there, right?
Well...
I mean, is this something we're doing?
What we need to do is we need to get the driveway permit.
Okay, and then after that?
Then after that, you know, and I think that's just going to speed up the process. And then we still have to get, you know, we get an engineer, you got the driveway permit, they can engineer for where we want to go in.
Okay, all right.
If they change it, obviously, we'd have to re-permit to do that.
Okay.
But I don't believe we'll have an issue where we're talking about going in.
Okay.
But just so it's clear, the RFP that you guys approved last week and that's now been mailed out has nothing to do with that?
No.
No.
No, not at all. That's a totally, that's...
I just want to make that clear.
I wanted to make it part of that, but we decided not to do that.
Oh, we didn't, okay, that's what I was thinking.
We're going to make it a separate...
They weren't connected.
And we are working on it.
So, when we get the driveway permit in, then we go to the engineer?
Yeah.
Is that, I said, once we get the driveway permit in, then we make a decision on engineering, right?
Well, we can put the RFP out for the engineer anytime.
Yeah.
We ought to be working on that now.
All right.
And I'm...
Then maybe next week we could...
I'm making some phone calls, trying to, you know, find some engineering firms there that, you know, that deal in municipalities such as ours.
Okay.
So, so I guess to answer the questions out there, this is being worked on. And, and for more information, just come to the meetings because it sounds like the, a lot of stuff we've been talking about wasn't translated through that meeting the other day.
Right. I have two more things. They're working on the Christmas tree lighting. I'm going to drop the Christmas tree off the week before Thanksgiving so they can kind of get that together. They were talking about maybe getting the Brownie troops to come help decorate it and do decorations, not just the, the lights, but, you know, bring ornaments and stuff. And basketball and cheer start on 12/1 and that goes through the middle of February, so...
Kim, on the walking trail?
Yeah.
Did they, did they put a vote up to whether or not they wanted to proceed with that or is that just an idea?
I think it's just an idea. I mean, she didn't say if they did.
I think what we were talking about was having the, the committee itself give a recommendation whether or not they think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Not myself, I don't like that.
All right, so, and what'd you think about money for ref, referees?
Well, if you can't get refs...
I know.
I don't know what the practice is out there in other towns, but I wouldn't be surprised if at times they pay for a ref.
No, they do.
She says like $25 a game or something?
I know, when they did the SSYA, it was like $50 a game.
Yeah.
Oh, 50, she said 25, so...
We've got to make sure we have refs.
Well, right.
A lot of the high school kids will come and do it.
Well, that's what she was saying, yes.
Service, but they'll also come and do it so they can make a couple bucks.
So, we've never paid for refs?
No. We've never had real refs. We just had the parents run around.
Right, yeah.
There was a lot of talk in the meeting as well about getting high schools to provide training and see if there was high school students that wanted to do it for the service hours they need to graduate now.
Yep.
Reaching out to the, so I don't know if that, did she mention that?
She didn't. I mean, she said they have some high schools that do it, but not the, you know...
They live down in Shawes Field during soccer season. You know, a lot of those people there, ref are high school kids from the high school team that'll come down and they'll do all that.
For the hours, are they a small stipend?
Some of them get paid, some of them do it for the, the hours for community service.
Does she mention it? Did they budget? Is it something that they have a, some wiggle room?
Well, I'll talk with her tomorrow. I don't know, no.
Yeah, they probably ought to, because what they're going to have to do if they're going to start hiring refs, they're going to have to figure out how many games they got.
Yep.
And figure out how much money they got to give you up, see if they even have the money to do it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Kim?
I don't think so. I think that's pretty much everything on our list and...
Did you want to mention the box just so that we can officially, because that was one of the questions? That's about the box for the trinkets, because she called and asked me as well.
Okay, but that's got nothing to do with the rec.
Right.
That's so...
So, we're going to pass on that.
Right, because I mean, it's not a rec activity, that's a...
Right, it was something they were going to sell at a craft fair and get the money.
Right. I know years ago at the school, you know, the kids would go in and, I don't know if it was parents, teachers, I forget who did it, but every year, they had these tables and your kids could go and spend 25, 50 cents, up to a dollar, and buy gifts for their family. And they haven't done it in a long time. So, that's something that Samantha and I think Crystal are doing on their own.
On the craft fair, yeah.
So, it has nothing to do with the rec.
Okay.
So, but I think she asked to have a box here and it's got nothing to do with us, so no on the box. I would say we got enough collecting going on probably Thanksgiving time, Christmas time, so. So, yeah, I guess that's about it. Thank you.
What's that?
Any, any update, liaison update?
Oh, yeah. So, road committee, they, they made their, that was last week, week before, yeah, something like that. I already gave the explanation on that. Code enforcement, have been in touch with our code enforcer, code enforcement officer and we're still looking for a secretary. Mary Grant Committee, nothing. And Forest Committee, Jen, do we have...
Yeah, so we have, and I wasn't sure what you wanted to, because we got two emails from two different committee members.
Yep.
Wanting to know if they could see the draft, but you and I haven't really, so we need to pencil some time in.
Just got proofread it before we send it out, but can you...
Yeah, I think they're scheduled to meet on the 14th, so...
Yes, yeah. Can, can you reply back to them that we are going to have that information shortly?
Do you want to present it as a group at the meeting and go over it instead of, what do you want them to see in advance? I mean, I'm not sure that you've seen my final, so I'll start by emailing you that.
Yeah.
And then just let them know that within the next week, we'll send them a draft or...
Yeah, I think that's, as long as we get it there before their meeting, I think it's a good idea. I like to have, have them see it and then they can part, you know, muller over a little, muller over a little bit. So, when they get to the meeting whether or not, you know, this is something they want to do, you know, they get a little bit of information up ahead, so...
And I'll reply on your behalf.
And one email there about the ordinance. And so, I think what we'll do is we'll work, we'll work on this first on the...
Job description.
Job description, thank you. And then we'll work on the other one afterwards, after we make sure this is...
You want to get that in place first?
I just don't want to get too many things at once.
Okay, I'll let them know.
And that's it?
Can I say something before we move on? I know I said I didn't have anything on the school because I haven't been to a meeting, but they had a great trunk or treat.
Yes.
Yes, they did. It was awesome.
Take a little...
Yes, yep, we went this weekend. Actually, I saw you there. So, they did a great job, no good job. The kids were all having a grand time, so...
The reports from the liaisons are a little more extensive than we typically did. I'm happy to take any questions anybody has at this point, if there are any comments or questions. Otherwise, we can move on.
I believe at the, Ray Lopez, I believe at the last selectmen meeting, you guys had talked about getting an engineer on retainer.
Yeah.
That, so the one for the parking lot will be totally different than getting the one on retainer?
No, what we're talking about getting on retainer would be one to do the parking lot up here.
Okay.
Do the parking lot up there. Well, we think we'd start with one, see how it worked out. If this is, if this is an engineer that we feel is good for the position, because we got all kinds of projects we can use this individual for.
Right, right.
Or a company or whatever, because at some point, we really have to get together and start figuring out what we're going to do out here, especially with the old fire station and all that. My, my concentration, I want to concentrate on the rec field because we got, well, we have money and proof of both of them, but it's kind of something that really needs to be...
So, the one that you're looking for, for the rec field can possibly go into being on a retainer?
I want them just like a town lawyer or whatever, that we can...
It would be somebody we use for the rec field.
Because you, you know, to put out the bid for every project for a different engineer...
Right, right, right.
Because it's, it's not like buying winter sand, okay? You know, you look at the quality, yeah, this is good, service is great, you know, whatever. You put out the bid, you don't know what you're getting, you know? So, if we find, if we can find an engineer that's good, we can get him so that he's on, you know, on board with us that we can just go bang, 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 and get some of these projects done. I think we'd be in a really good spot.
Right, that's... I think it's about finding a competent engineer and establishing the billing rates, just like we do with the lawyers. We establish a billing rate, we got to have a billing rate for the engineer, and then we can just handle these projects. Yep. And, and so we don't have to go through an RFP each...
So, basically, it's in the works?
I'm sorry?
Basically, it's in the works, so still trying to find one for...
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
What is our first step on writing that RFP? Because we have not, I mean, we've talked about it last week.
David, I think, was working on it.
Oh, David's writing the RFP?
Is that right, David?
I don't know.
I think he's calling.
Working on how we're going to get to that point.
Okay, let me know if I can help.
Yeah, we've got to get to that point.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Daniel Lord. I just wanted to make comments in regards to the roughing, paying, the ref...
Got to the what?
The refereeing, the paying, like just to...
Oh, yep, yep.
The referees at Shawes Field are all paid. Pete Levasseur is the state director and he does a training in the summer and all those referees are paid. I was a referee when I was in high school. And one of the reasons why, they've done volunteers in the past, but they're a little concerned because a lot of volunteers have certain hours and they've seen a history in the past, there was discussed at the meeting, how once they reach those hours, they stop so they don't have that commitment. So, halfway through the season, if a student reaches their hours, they just kind of fall off and then they're kind of in a bind trying to find people and parents to referee the rest of the games.
I think we've said that we agree that we would pay them.
Yeah, but I know what's saying is I was wrong because I, I said some of them volunteered. Back when my kids were in rec and my friends had kids that coached.
And I know some of them do.
I just want to point out, I didn't say anyone was wrong. I just, I didn't hear the fact that you agreed. I just wanted some clarifications.
Okay.
So, that's it. So, I didn't say anyone's name.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments about those? Okay. Onto old business. West Shore Drive, culvert.
David? We've made a recommendation on the culvert. So, at this point here, we, we've got to make a decision whether or not we're going to continue on with ransom and have them turn around and design the culvert that we want to put in and make the adjustments that'll be suffice for Army Corps. So, I, I'm suggesting that we, we stay with what we have because we've gone this far and have them make the adjustments to get rid of the rock baskets, whatever you want to call them. And get everything surveyed and to the point where we can get this out the bid. And, and I'd like to get the permission from the rest of the board, being a liaison, to meet with the, the land of butters that we need to use their property to get around, get through, see if we can start working something out about access.
I think that would be great. Let's get that, yes. I think that's fine.
Get moving.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, do I, do we have to make a motion?
So, what, I'm sorry, so you're going to, so you're going to meet with the butters and start figuring out the next step, but I missed the part because this phone rang.
Ransom.
Are you going to continue with them?
We, we are going to continue through this project.
Okay.
At this point...
Task three and four, I think it was the minimum.
I believe the contract that we have signed... Hey, Robin?
That's such an echo. All right, all right. So, the contract you've signed?
The contract that we've signed is, I believe, has continuations of beyond what we've done. And part of that would be to do what we want to do. So, I believe at this point here, she was at the meeting, or I could talk to her, we can talk to her, whatever, and I explained to her that we want her to start the design, the actual design that we can put out to bid, you know, to get rid of the rock baskets or what are they called?
Gabian.
Gable ends or something.
Gabian, isn't it gabian?
Gabian baskets.
Gabian baskets.
Okay, but nobody uses them anymore, mostly. But, and to engineer that, to suffice Army Corps of Engineers, if she knows what she has to do.
What are nice schedule, I'm a conference call for the three of us. We'll get it scheduled and you can...
Good.
And I'm going to meet with Mr. Kitchrich and the, Mr. Roy, see if I can schedule some of those guys to see about our access road and what we can do so I can bring the information back to you guys.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Town hall, what a bid. I had an opportunity to talk now to this other provider who is local and he had come out. I think he met with Jason, looked at one of the building and checked out all that needed to be to make sure that he understood how he would install and exactly what the specifications were of the equipment that would be installed. He's taken all that, he's gone, he's going back to the company that surprised him to make sure that, in fact, the design he's thinking of will in fact work, which I think is a great step. He then will come back, I don't know if he'll come back again to the building or not. He, I think he will one more time.
Well, you said, yeah.
Yeah, and then we expect to get a quote from him. And we expect this quote to be favorable compared to the other two. Let's just leave it at that. Okay, we'll see what it looks like when it comes in, but it's moving along.
It's tough putting that stuff out to bid when you're got different ideas. So, you know, I think what we're doing is pretty good by bringing all the ideas in, getting the prices and then working with it afterwards.
Salt price, who's speaking to this?
William.
Yeah, we did some phone tagging.
Do you have this letter?
Yeah, so last Wednesday we were here, we talked about it. And then I called back up there, I think Friday and Thursday morning. And then Friday morning, I got an email from, uh, some, I guess I had Yip, Jason.
Jason Arshinbop.
And I gave me a price of seventy-eight per ton. So I'd say we take it and sign it right now.
I, I, I made, I made the call at the same-
Granite State.
Nice.
I made the call and I didn't know he made the call. So he was like, um, oh, I'll get right back to you, something don't sound right. And then I got, I called him and so, but we got it done.
So what do we got to do at this stage to lock this up?
We're going to make a motion to approve Granite State at seventy-eight dollars a ton and Will is going to tell me what his estimated tonnage is.
Uh, I think we put a thousand last year.
Well, you got to, you, you, are you figuring the tonnage with putting the sand up or straight salt?
Well, I'm just thinking straight salt right now because we got our sand, we still got plenty of salt left over, so I think a thousand would be more than enough.
I think you'd be better off up in that, you're better off going high than low.
On the tonnage?
On the tonnage, yeah. Because they're not going to hold you to it. But at least we know we, we can get it.
Unless, unless prices are going to go down, if you've got salt left over from the prior year, we probably ought to plan to have salt left over at the end of this year to carry us into, like you did this year, right?
Well, that's why I said, if he, if you figure for more, so just sit two thousand because just in case we're still on the same contract when you go to put the sand up next year, you can get that extra, you know, eight hundred yards, whatever it takes to put up your, your salt.
Okay, good.
So what number am I using?
Two thousand, is that what you said?
I think that's the number we always used anyways.
That's fine.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we approve the, uh, we approve the Granite State bid at seventy-eight dollars per ton.
I'll second that. Comments?
Yes.
Assume you have a comment.
Yes. Last week, I, I watched a selectman's meeting to make sure I was right. What wasn't done last year was Southern Maine Regional Planning wasn't notified. So that's why we didn't get in on the salt prices last year. And before I continue, I want to make it very clear that this is not the town adminis- on the town administrator. That not happening last year. Because we, we belong, and you wouldn't know this probably, Tom. We belong to Southern Maine Regional Planning and it's a co-op. And we buy a lot of stuff, supplies and different things as a co-op. And last year, when they were notified about the salt, we had missed the date to get in on the salt bid.
For the coming year?
For last, for last year.
For, oh, for last year.
That's what, that's what happened last year.
Saying we missed it for the winter of twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And I assume that we didn't make it again this year. Because if we did, then we'd be getting it for a lower price through the co-op. And I, I do know, like the town hall, we, we paid dues to belong to this for many, many years. And it was a misstep last year. But the, the issue is really on the selectmen. Because as Jen has said many times, she just does what the selectmen ask her to do. It is kind of like when I messed up three or four weeks ago on the warrant. And it's my responsibility, even though she does all, uh, work, I was, my responsibility to make sure it was right, just like it's on the selectmen's responsibility to make sure this stuff is done. What's that?
Has it been more than a few years since we've gone with the cog?
No, no, last year was the first year that we missed it. One hundred percent.
No, 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 I'm going to-
Yes, that's, that's one hundred percent.
I know this more than anybody in this room, okay? We've only used the cog once-
No, you know you don't.
In twelve or fifteen years, because I was ordering the salt. I'm the one who did the order in for-
I mean, I know about it and stuff, but I was wondering if-
The road commissioner has always ordered the salt.
So the road-
But it was, we got our price through Southern Maine Regional Planning.
We did not.
So anyway, in the future, Tom, there's something to consider.
Dennis, I take your comment that you're, you're suggesting that had we gone and participated in that cooperative buy, that we could have bought the salt cheaper than what we bought it for.
Yes.
And it's a cooperative that we paid for.
Yes.
So, um, you know, regardless of how many years we used it, I, um-
So it's something for next year?
Jennifer, can you do me a favor and maybe the other, no, no, this is simple. Can you just point me-
I didn't want to answer it.
No, can you just point me to the, a website or something that would, for me anyways, describe what these people do? I'd like to understand that.
Is it for like bulk and stuff like that?
It's for copy paper, it's for a lot of-
Right.
Are we using it for other things, Jennifer?
The planning board uses it a lot. It, it is something that-
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Because we, uh, we get a price every year from Southern Maine Regional.
Okay.
We never go with it. We, we only, we went one year.
Oh, okay.
Okay, one year and, and we did, we got post-service. But what ends up happening is, because we always went with Granite State. We've always gone, well, since I was road commissioner, I think before I was road commissioner, we always went with Granite State. But what would end up happening is the, they call it the cog, okay? And the cog would give this price for this region, okay, so much per ton. Well, what would end up happening is every year Granite State would either match it or be a little lower than the cog. And we had a good relationship with them. They had two fellows there that lived in Waterboro who'd return trip every night for us. So we continued with Granite State. We did not use Southern Maine Regional for that. And, and by the way, yes, we, I'm sure we are at some blame for this, but, and I don't want to throw the road commissioners under the bus, but when I was road commissioner, it was Scott and I's job to do the salt. And we, and we did that. That was our job. So, um, we, we learned a lesson this year, right? And we'll, we will make sure that doesn't happen again.
When do we usually have to go in with them or, or when, is it?
We start at like June or July, usually we start sending in. And we wait for a response.
Okay.
Whether or not the response came, we missed it.
Start thinking about it, May and June then, just-
I assume we have to give them information before we actually submit a bid or an RFP for bid. So, so we, we ought to be providing them the information so that we can, they can participate in our bid process.
The information they want is similar to what we just, we just did. Two thousand ton, three thousand ton, blah, 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 blah.
Then we can have them on the bid list, right, David? They could be on the bid list and if we, if they're, if they're better bid, then we can evaluate that and-
And then that's why we do it. You know, I mean, with, with the way we had been doing it is because, you know, we, we always went out to the cog number. We, 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 because we always figured it should be better.
Yeah, you would think so.
Because it's through the state of Maine government, but it never was. So I think it was last year. I think last year it was better and that's, I think that's why we, was last year the first year we went through the cog? Yeah, because we always used Granite State before that, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so.
So Will, I, I know you got this one for next year. Let's make sure that we, uh, participate in that co-op. If there's information we need, we can get that together and make sure we can take advantage of that if they are the right source.
You and Adam.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Have you, yeah. Anything else on that?
So there was a motion, it was seconded, do we have a vote and sign?
Uh, all those in favor? Okay.
I have it all filled out.
Thank you.
Just initial.
Just initial or some?
Just initial where it says signature above all three.
Okay. Fire chief appointment correction, what did I do wrong?
You didn't do anything wrong. I, um, I appointed him for one year, but the ordinance very clearly says it's a three-year appointment. So, um, it's been corrected to three years. Thank you, Wayne. He had, Wayne had already studied his ordinance and came right to me and said, what do you mean? You only gave me a year.
And you think his job was short-lived?
Yeah. So yes, if you could make another motion for that expiration date, that would be appreciated.
So we're going to make a new motion to elect Wayne Ham as fire chief. And let's see here, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of Maine, hereby appoint you as fire chief within and for the municipality of Acton until eleven, one, two thousand twenty-five, given under our hand the second day of November, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, so corrected. Appointments. Do you have any appointments? It looks like we do.
Oh, my gosh.
Quite a few.
So-
Can I say one, can I say one thing on the salt?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
So the price we got from the cog this year was eighty dollars and eighty-four cents delivered to the Sanchez, so I saved you two dollars.
Thank you.
My point, thank you.
All right. Okay. Appointments.
So, um, these are all appointments for the November election. They're done for, in two-year increments. We have, and you could just make a motion to approve them as, yeah, as read. Virginia Shea is the warden and she's the only one, so if you want to motion for her separately.
Okay.
You're going to have to read it all, you can just-
Okay, make a motion to appoint Virginia Shea as warden.
I'll second that.
Question. What is a warden?
So, I'm glad you asked, Tom, I love these questions. No, so, um, every election has wardens and moderators.
Oh, for elections.
Is that all I get to say? Yeah.
No, you can go on.
Election warden, no, that's it.
No, I was thinking of like a, you know, a fishing game warden.
I was going to tell you, I was going to tell you everything from the start of the day to the end.
Go ahead.
She's our election warden, we'll leave it at that.
She sits over at the desk there making sure we're being heard, right?
Yeah, we'll go with that. So she's your warden.
Okay. Uh, we have- It's been moved and seconded? All in favor? Okay.
We have two deputy wardens, because it's a long day. Sheila Conway and Don Van Cindron that will serve at her pleasure in her absence.
All right, so we'll make a motion to elect Sheila Conway and Dan Van Cindron as deputy wardens. Three thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
Second it.
All in favor? Okay.
How about trivia for the board? The difference between a warden and a moderator? Because you're going to have both at this election. Anybody?
Don't do this.
Bonus points?
Oh, moderator.
Moderator is needed for the town election, the warden oversees the state election.
Oh, really?
Okay. All right, these are your ballot clerks. We're just going to read them off and you can so moved if you so wish. Deborah Robertson, Estelle Gore, Gail Bovare, Patricia Perkins, Nancy Rumah, Bernard Broder, Hannah Robertson, Shailene Gobero, Anne Sabele, Dan Crampset, Anne McKeckren, Virginia DeBoer, Robert Sibily, Tammy Crampset, Chelsea Kenyon, Lucinda Lorenjo, Linda Leck, Kelly Collins, Yoli Gallagher and Cheryl Driscoll. That is an even number of Republicans, Democrats and unenrolled, in case you wondered. I'm sorry. I'm sure.
So can we just make a motion?
To approve them as read.
To approve them as read, to be election ballot clerks within and for the municipality of Acton until three thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
All right.
Are there any other appointments, Jennifer?
Some for you, some for David.
Give us a moment while we-
So while they're doing that, just a reminder, election day next week. Polls are open from eight AM to eight PM. The board did authorize us to close our office for all non-election business. We have over three hundred absentees at this point that we'll be processing every hour, so we'll need full, all hands on deck to do that. We will open hopefully, well, we will open by eleven o'clock on Wednesday. And hopefully we'll have the results posted by, my goal is eleven-thirty, so we'll see how it goes. And don't forget to get your absentee ballot out. We still have probably over a hundred still out, so we need to get them back by eight o'clock on election night.
I don't see it on here.
What you looking for?
I thought it mentioned at some point this week there, um, I want on the agenda there that we were talking about, uh, closing the week of Thanksgiving. I'm not closing, I'm not having a meeting.
Oh, oh, yes, you mentioned that to me, my mistake, I thought you-
You've got too many things in front of me.
I was going to put it under my weekly update and then we got so busy. There were actually five Wednesdays in Thanksgiving, uh, in Thanksgiving. There were five Wednesdays in November in the past, Tom. The board is off and canceled that Wednesday meeting of Thanksgiving.
We're open Friday, though?
Oh, we're not open Friday. Town Hall is closed Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, just the meeting will still be open.
Okay, no, but I was curious about town hall is closed Thursday, obviously Thursday and Friday?
Friday, yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'll take that.
Do you want to cancel the meeting on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
I mean, we usually, we've done it in the past.
It would be very helpful with our dinner that we're serving on Thursday.
Yes.
Because that would give time to-
This doesn't require a motion, does it?
Nope, just cancel polls.
What time are you doing the dinner?
I don't have any objections, so I think I'd-
Yeah, that's fine.
Dinner is at one, and I will tell you that we've already had a, a lot of positive, you know, we've, we've been, it's funny, it's like it's kind of ironic, some of the residents I've been thinking about, they've just been appearing this week.
Oh, good.
We'd give it up.
I saw, I saw one today, yeah.
And they're just, they're happy, you know, they, they're happy about it, so.
Who's it going to be held against?
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Remember you signed up for pie?
Yeah. Oh, I did.
You did.
You mean Kathy signed up for a pie?
Yeah, you signed Kathy up for pie. I'm excited, I think it's going to be fun. A lot of our elderly are excited about it.
Are you taking, um, you're still doing a list for baskets?
Yeah.
Okay, because I have a couple.
You have a couple people?
Yep.
I'm hoping to do just ten baskets with the, because a lot of our seniors that we were giving baskets to would rather come here and, and have a meal.
I'm sure. Because I'll get out and visit and-
Okay. I got to finish this because the next item is, take a little time. I understand there may be an appointment in the works for the capital planning committee? Is that working its way through?
Oh, good.
Okay.
A what?
For the capital planning committee, is somebody who-
Oh, is interested?
Yeah, yeah, so that's great.
How many people are, how many people are we looking for for that committee? And it's not, there's not-
We're missing a couple people on that committee, correct?
According to the, the rules, we can have up to seven. And right now, um, and I would have to check with Kim if she, Tom has only given, Kim has been a member.
Right.
And if she, we're four with Kim.
Oops, four.
But we didn't, did we put her on as an actual member or she doesn't have an oath and she doesn't have an, she's not an actual committee member, is she? That we didn't do?
Well, we have since we began.
I was, yeah.
But I'm just wondering, she doesn't have an expiration date like everybody else? I don't think we gave her an oath, per se.
So, I mean, if someone is interested in one or two, a couple more would be great.
Planning board, too, if we're talking about that, we've got to find a couple of alternates for that planning board.
Planning board. Do we put a notice out anywhere? I'm sure you've done it.
We do, I mean, it's on the website, I occasionally put it on the internet. We can run something after the election, I'll try to focus on finding some people.
That's great. The town employees are currently eligible for a high deductible health plan. And there is a contribution in addition to that made to HSA, is that, did I get that acronym correct? HSA, Health Savings Account, to help cover that high deductible. We've been looking at an alternative set of plans that are available through Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust. This is basically Maine Municipal, it's created its own trust in which they're creating these health plans and offering them to, to Maine towns and cities. And a fairly large number of them, I, over like a hundred and fifty, two hundred towns are already enrolled in this. So this actually started with our former treasurer, Michelle, who had been looking at this plan and trying to assess what the implications would be. And her, one of her parting recommendations was we continue to look at this and, and take it up as an item.
And it did go on the town meeting warrant?
Didn't go on a warrant. It was, was approved, that authorized the selectmen to basically enter into health plan contracts with this organization. So we've been looking at the health plans and, um, by and large, I think they offer very attractive alternatives to what we have today. They're probably, I think, more in line with what you would find more typical with employers. And some are traditional HMO-type plans and there is one that is a, a point-of-service plan. We've been evaluating those plans and there are, there are five plans that are being offered. They, they indicated, the trust indicated we could offer up to three. And we think by offering three, it would give employees a nice choice. What, what one might consider a very high-end health plan, very low copays, no deduct, no deductibles, but a higher premium. There's one that's sort of a HMO that is sort of in the middle of that. And it has a deductible of five hundred to a thousand, which is a very reasonable deductible, I think, for most plans. And then there's a, a third one that we're looking at, which is, uh, it's called a PPO. These last two are called PPOs, but they're really like an HMO. You got to get referrals and that sort of thing. And that has a deductible of twenty-five hundred to five thousand. As you can imagine, the premiums for both the town and the employees go, go down as you go from the first to the third. So, um, there are still some questions we have about the plans. And unfortunately, we have to make a decision on these plans tonight if we're going to move forward with them. And we've had a chance to, to review those among the selectmen. We have a couple of questions, though, that I think are conditions that I would like to see added to any resolution that we can clarify before we actually execute. So what we're talking about is adopting a motion today that would authorize the selectmen to enter into contract with the trust to offer three health plans, subject to satisfactory answers on two points. One is, um, there's some question about our ability to, um, set the employee contribution rate directly for each plan. In other words, if Plan A has a, has a price, Plan B has a lower price, Plan C has an even lower price, that the employee contributions would be fifteen percent of those varying premiums. So we just want to verify that. And it doesn't have to be some average or some other thing. There was some indication that maybe it did. So we need to clarify that point. Is that clear, what I said?
Yep.
Okay. And the second point is, it's unclear whether or not the point-of-service plan can be used out of state, which I find very strange. But there was some, some suggestion that it couldn't be. And I think, given that we're a, a border town, that it's likely that many employees would probably like the option of seeking their health care out of state. And we just want to make sure that that is an option with all three plans. So if we could have a motion to adopt, to authorize the selectmen to enter into contracts with the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust for POSC, PPO five hundred and PPO twenty-five hundred, subject to satisfactory answers on those two questions.
I'll second that.
I, I was- Okay, I was just going to let you-
It sounded like you made the motion.
Just say so moved, and it'll comp it over, if that's what you agree with.
So moved, how's that?
Second that.
Any comments or questions?
You said there was a 15% rate to the employee, depending on, on the premium of which plan, whichever they choose.
That's right.
So, that would be 15% across the board, regardless of what plan it is?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure about that.
Yeah, that's right. Any other comments? We expect there to be a budget savings from this, from adopting these plans, which is great news, I think. And so, it really depends on which employees enroll in which plans, because each of the plans have a different cost to them. So, it's very difficult to tell exactly how this will shake out until we go through an open enrollment and employees make their selection. But even if they all took the highest-priced plan, we believe it would be...
Budgeted for the worst.
Yeah, we budgeted for the worst, and we think there'll be a net saving, so budgetarily not an impact.
I think there's better plans for them, too.
I'm sorry?
I mean, I think these are better plans. They offer more to our employees versus what we've had.
The middle plan is better than what we already have.
Right.
And we have a plan better than that.
Yeah.
It should be quite an upgrade.
It's nice that they have choices. I, that's what I like about this.
Yeah, and I think it should be a recruitment tool for employees as well. I hope that when we're looking for people, that they'll find the benefits are more standard with what they'll probably find in many employers in the area. So, it's been moved and seconded? No comments or questions?
One last question.
Yes.
Now, you said this would be an adoption pending these two questions, that you're gonna go back to the insurance company and ask them, can we have this along with whatever you, the 15% or the out-of-state option, correct?
The out-of-state option, and I just wanna make sure that the 15, that I believe the 15% would be applied to the premium applicable to each of those plans. That that, the employee would pay 15% of the premium for whatever plan they choose. I just wanted, there was some suggestion that that might not be the case. We just wanna clarify that before we go any further.
Okay, so I guess, the follow-up on my, the way I'm looking at it, is the contingency on accepting this would be with their reply on these two questions that the board has.
Yes.
What are they offering at this time, if they decide what we have is what we are offering? So, what, what?
We have to pick three of the five that have, is it five or six?
Five.
Okay. We picked a POSC, okay, the POS?
POS.
POS, whatever.
I wanna know if you can use it.
We picked that to give an option of a really, really good plan. If we can't do that, then we can pick another one to replace that.
Right, well, I guess, my question is, then, because you have the contingency of 15% on the employee, but what are they asking for at this point in time? I mean, you're asking them to allow you to do 15%.
We've had, basically, the treasurer and I were on the phone, and Jennifer may have been on the phone with us as well, where we talked to the representative from the trust. And we heard different things. And so, when we were, you know, finalizing our discussion today, that kind of popped out, and we said, gee, we need to clarify this one way or the other, before we go forward. So, we, what the motion is, is it basically authorizes the selectmen to go forward on the assumption that the answer to those questions will be positive.
Right.
Okay?
And that, that's where my question comes in, is if it's not on a positive aspect of it, then with the percentage that the employees, that the insurance company is asking the employees to pay, is that a higher percentage rate?
We don't know what they're asking. I don't believe they can dictate that. I've never seen that. And that's what has been suggested. I've never heard of that, because it, it just wouldn't make any sense.
But if, but if they did say we had to do that, then we can, we can revert back and say, you know, instead...
We'll take Plan This instead of this Plan.
We could go one plan. That way, everybody's on the same boat, if that was the case. So, as, at this point here, we wanna do these three. We just have these two questions to ask. If they come back to where we figure they are, I don't believe they can dictate. We could pay 100% if we want to.
So, in their presentation, they're not, they're not listing any percentages that are paid by any of the employees?
That is our decision. The employee, employer contribution is an employer decision. So, I just can't imagine that the answer to this question isn't fine for us. I, I can't imagine.
We just wanna make sure of it.
Yeah, we, we just wanna, wanna make sure. And so, the motion, as long as we get a positive answer on both of these, we're gonna change plans.
So...
I hope I'm getting to your question.
No, I, yeah, and basically, you are, in a sense, but I'm looking at the aspect of, since you are the employee or employer, to the employees, you're gonna say, okay, we're gonna charge you 15%. But let's say the insurance company is saying, well, we're gonna, we want 20% or 25%.
They can't do that.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
They're gonna get, they're gonna get 100%. And 85 is gonna be paid by the town, and 15 by the employees.
That was, that was what I was getting at.
They don't care.
Well, the balance of whatever it is gonna be, would be paid by the town.
That's right.
And the employees who want to be the 15%.
That's between us and our employees, yeah.
So, I'm just looking at it from the aspect of, okay, what would the citizens be taxed and paying for that portion that, you know, the employees wouldn't be paying?
Right, the same that they're paying now.
What we're trying to do here is, we're trying to make sure that the employer also doesn't have to pay a whole lot more than what they were paying, paying in. So, we have other discussions of how we may take care of that issue.
I hope for a follow-up on this discussion, for letting the people know what went on, or what happens with it.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
We'll put that on next week's agenda. Oh, is, is that, yeah, yeah, okay. Town Hall building use release, the RFP has been released?
Did we finish?
Oh, yeah, we gotta take a vote. We, thank you.
It's okay.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. Town Hall building use release.
So, this is the email, this is the document that I emailed you. We have a homeschool group enacted, that we've been going back and forth about them using the hall for more schooling events, if you will. It's a little different than the building use policy that we have now, when we let people have an occasional birthday party. So, Tom is the chair, actually met with her a few weeks back, and we asked them to draft something that, something that they thought their parents would sign. So, essentially, it's a small group of kids, 8 to 12 kids, that wanna meet, you know, once a week, once every other week, and, you know, do sewing classes or do, you know, cooking classes. So, this is a standard release that comes from the state of Maine that she presented. And we just wanted the board to review it. Her parents are all okay with signing it.
I've reviewed it.
Have you had a chance yet, David and Kim?
Yep.
Look at these. It looked, it looked pretty standard.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing, as we go into having them sign this, is, you know, and we won't have to discuss it tonight, but looking at the building permit, you know, the building policy altogether, I mean, we're asking the homeschoolers to sign this. Well, what about the Girl Scouts that meet once a week? And I'm not sure how they're different, because they're doing kind of the same, you know, little home, you know, cooking class, or sewing class. So, I just, I don't wanna see us treating one group differently. So, it may be something we wanna incorporate after the new year with everybody.
So, you know, maybe we should be, if we're talking about having them do it, the Girl Scouts?
Anybody that uses the hall would have to do it.
Any event.
Especially for the vendors, not the people coming to it, but the actual doing the event. Might be a good policy to have.
Okay. So, we'll find a way to incorporate it into our building use for the start of the new year as well.
Okay.
Very good. So, we need a motion?
Uh, yes, please.
Make a motion to accept the release of participation in activity or event or activity for them.
I'll second that.
Any comments? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. David, you wanna sign that?
I want to sign one of these.
I know, you don't need to sign it. This is, we're good.
Oh, I didn't sign it either.
Well, this is, I mean, we're gonna have each one of them, we're gonna have...
Right there, signing it.
It's supposed to sign it.
Every event, yeah, I'll get back to you.
There you go.
Oh, no, I've been signing stuff all night, you know.
Okay. We're ready to move into executive session. And for personnel matter, let me see, public comment? Let's open it up for public comment before we do so.
Yeah, hi, Joyce Fagshy. I have three things. First of all, to Will, District 1, yay on the road, and the people who are doing the job, I was trying, because very little road, I didn't really look at their trucks to see who they were.
Carol Materials.
They are doing a great job. They're very polite. They wave. And, great job.
Yeah, county, county road came out beautiful. It just came down at time.
They're doing a great job.
The same outfit do that?
Yep, yep.
Um, second thing is, I was wondering, especially with capital improvement, we are a small committee. We have other committees that are small. Is there a chance that we could start using downstairs as a meeting room again, as we have in the past? You know, we wouldn't have to move stuff around, really.
No. So, the, when, the board made a decision, when we opened that up to be offices, that it wouldn't be open to the public anymore, because there are, there's an alarm, there's, there's computer systems, there's, it used to, they're not, they're used to not being office down there. There were no files down there. There were no, you know, the violations of computers, the town staff, I mean, that's what, you know, we knew when we, when Mr. Paul decided that he wanted to expand that and make it not a meeting room and turn it into a personal office, the board knew that they were gonna use, lose that space, because it's just not, it's gotta be secured.
In Town Hall, it's been, I mean, we've been able to schedule and make sure you had your...
Yeah, I, I know. I just, I think...
Do you have problems getting dates?
No.
Okay.
I mean, although some of the days we meet, Girl Scouts like to meet, so we try to be aware of that. I thought it just might be an easier thing.
It's, it would, we would have to move them. There's a lot of stuff that's on public.
I understand. I understand. The other thing, and this is gonna sound crazy, I was in an exercise class this morning, and the caller came up. And lady said to me, oh, he, she said, this is wonderful. We're gonna get Option 3, 'cause that's what she heard. And I said, oh, well, from the road committee? She said, no, the selectmen. They said it was the cheapest one. I understood we were getting gabion baskets, the Option 1, correct?
Right, no gabion baskets, but we'll get one.
No baskets.
Yeah, but in-kind, in-kind, we should call it.
The in-kind replacement.
In-kind replacement, that's what I thought.
You know, the confusion there may have been, that the engineer report indicated that it was the more expensive of the three options.
Well, that's exactly what she said to me. Why are we going with the most expensive one?
Well, I think the confusion, confusion was, there was a recommendation to take three from the road committee.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think it was more what he said, that she said, well, why did they take the most expensive one, then? And, I mean...
Why, did we take the most expensive one?
If you read the report, that's what it says.
But the most, the least expensive one, we still would have had to have done, how much money to the roads? I mean, it's...
But that's not even part of the whole thing.
But I'm saying, if we did Number 3, we would have had to have done more extensive work.
In the first public hearing, it seemed like it all kinda... We asked her, because the Option 2 and 3 did not include the road work.
Oh, well, that's a good answer.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
If you included the road work in Option 2 and 3, how would they, would they all be about the same? And she said yes.
Yes.
Alright, that's where the confusion was.
My experience, by looking at those plans, the in-kind should be cheaper, because the other ones are a lot more groundwork, setting footings and all that other stuff, where this one is just pretty much digging it out. The only thing I'll do is redo where the gabion baskets are.
Well, you know what it's like, you're with one person, and five others are saying, oh, oh.
We, we should never have really, at the end of the day, we should never have gotten those prices. Okay? Because at the end of the day, they're all fictitious numbers. Nobody knows.
Nobody knows, exactly.
It's a estimate, and it could bring a lot of fear, you know. And at the same time, if you wanna discourage somebody from going where you're making it a lot more expensive.
Thank you for asking the question, because I could see where people would be confused.
Right, but thank you for the clarification.
The option that was selected is, is, I, is gonna be at least the same, but I believe cheaper than the other two options would have been, but...
Hey, it's getting done. Thanks for that.
All three of them, you still have to do the same thing. Everything's the same, except for the actual digging.
The thing itself.
And you're not redoing the whole road and everything. I feel, at the end of the day, it'll get cheaper.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other comments? Okay. The facility assessment RFP went, went out. This is to do an assessment of town buildings. It's due back 11:30, 22. I extended that to the 30th, after it getting out a little later than I thought. And the town website RFP is due back 11:30 as well. So, those are in the works. Announcements? Someone wanna make announcements?
Sure. November 3rd, we have a planning board meeting at 6:00 p.m. On the 9th, we've got a SLIC board meeting at 6:00 p.m. On November 14th, we have a Forest Committee meeting at 6:00 p.m. The 15th, Warrant and Finance at 6:00 p.m. The 16th, another Board of Selectmen's meeting. The 17th, we have a planning board at 6:00 p.m. November 20th, we have a REC Committee meeting at 11:30. November 23rd, is that the one we are...
We're gonna cancel, yeah.
So, the 23rd, we're gonna cancel that Select Board meeting. And then on the 29th, there's a Capital Improvement Committee meeting at 5:00 p.m. And on November 20th, we have a Select Board, oh, November 30th, I can't see, Select Board meeting at 6:00 p.m.
Very good. So, I think we're ready to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session, MRSA 405-6A-1 Personnel.
I'll second that. All in favor? We will come out immediately, exit executive session, and then adjourn the meeting. So, if you wanna wait for that, you're welcome to, but I don't believe there'll be any business to discuss. Thank you.
I make a motion to come out of executive session, MRSA 405-6A-1 Personnel.
Second that.
All in favor? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second that.
All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Night.